Members of the Planning Board, this is a workshop. It is May 10, 2016, and the focus of this workshop is really to bring you up to speed with what's happening with the courthouse couplet. That loop of highway that goes around the courthouse, south end of Kalispell. And really, we're looking between about 13th Street and about 7th Street. That segment of the highway. And that's, that piece of highway is the only piece of highway between Summers, of Highway 93, that is, between Summers and Whitefish. It's starting in 1991, when the original highway widening project started. It's the only piece that has not been turned into a four lane from Summers to Whitefish. So MDT has it as a priority to work on a solution for the roadway around the courthouse. And several years ago, or the original option was actually to have a two-lane road around each side of the courthouse, which would create a circular, maintain that circular loop, except that those designs somewhat straightened the loop around the courthouse. So it became less of a circle and more of almost a straight line with the concept that we're going to move faster, quicker, more, and better traffic down through Main Street. As part of our downtown redevelopment plan that we're working on right now, one of the main issues that's come out of that plan study, and it's still a draft plan, has been the desire to reclaim Main Street and convert it from a highway to a Main Street. And that's an issue that's really at the heart of many cities throughout the United States right now. How do you take a major highway that goes through your downtown and bring your downtown back? Well, you don't do it by putting more and more traffic down. And when MDT does a project, they design it for 20 years. So whatever they build around that courthouse, they're designing it for the traffic volumes they anticipate over the next 20 years. We have been talking with MDT, saying, you know, there might be other options than just a standard four-lane road coming around the courthouse. The city council, the downtown association, the planning staff have all asked MDT to take another look at what that design could be around the courthouse. MDT has graciously accepted that concept and hired Peschon Associates to undertake a traffic study, looking at specifically the traffic volumes around the courthouse. And as you're aware, we're at a real key point in our history. We are about to finish the bypass. We have a $32 million project that will be completed mostly by November. So this November, we'll be driving on that bypass. And that's going to change traffic patterns. And the driving force between that bypass was to alter the traffic flows on Main Street, primarily by giving trucks an alternate route, not having to come through downtown, but the alternate route would take the truck traffic around the outskirts of Kalispell and allow the traffic that wanted to come through Main Street to be on Main Street. So that's all wrapped up into the decisions involved in what should the traffic lane look like as you go around the courthouse. And understand that as the courthouse loop or the couplet is designed, so goes the future of our downtown. So if you design a four-lane road around the courthouse, you're really saying Main Street's always going to be a four lane. But today, it functions as a two-lane road. And then it broadens into a four-lane road as it goes down Main Street. So there are concepts on the table of maybe it should stay a two-lane road, and maybe Main Street is the one that should go on a road diet or have a redesign or reconfiguration. Possibly, a lot of different options could be looked at for what could we do for the downtown Kalispell area. And that's what's on the table right now. The RPA, Peschon Associates, they have completed their original traffic study. They took a very broad, broad review of the area. And I understand our transportation plan is a 2006 vintage, 10 years old. Oh my goodness. A lot of changes, and we're looking at updating that traffic plan. But Peschon Associates took a very broad review of what would various improvements to our community do to Main Street traffic. And in a second, I'm going to turn it over to Jared, and he's going to go review the highlights of the study that Peschon came up with. And this is just the traffic volumes. We're not talking about a specific design. We're still at the concept stage. But it's important to look at the concepts and understand where we're going before we actually get down to that specific design. And I think with that, I'm just going to turn it over to Jared to go through that and understand that the last thing, there are going to be a series of community meetings coming up in June to go over what we're talking about. And what we're talking about here is a great segue into the downtown plan that staff has been working on for the past year and a half with the downtown merchants. So we wanted to bring this information to you so that you continue to be informed, Planning Board members.
Tom, can I, when I read something in the paper about the study, my understanding was that it doesn't include projections for the bypass, but on here, it says that it does.
It very much does look at the bypass as a model. They've modeled the bypass. And I'm going to let Jared go through because they have a whole slate of options they looked at, but they're modeling. And one of the things the community wanted was actual numbers. Peschon feels very confident with their model, but regardless of that, we're going to have the model now. We're going to have real numbers in a year or two. So any other questions? And feel free to grab Jared as he goes through the process. It is complicated. We'll try to keep it simple, but there's a lot of numbers floating around. So when you don't grasp it, stop and say, wait a minute, we are way open to that.
So as Tom mentioned, it does include the bypass, these models. Obviously, the existing average annual daily trips wouldn't include that, but the projections in this traffic study go out to 2040. So we're looking a long ways out. This is, it includes all the, not only the bypass, but future housing, future jobs. We've allocated the housing into certain areas of the city in our core area, just projecting where we think development could be going out to the year 2040. So this is the baseline, starting, you know, on this very south side of the project area. You know, you're looking at just under 20,000 average annual, just past the courthouse, you know, just over 17,000 as you creep up towards Center Street, you know, the traffic volumes are dropping. Yeah, and as we move forward, there is eight, eight alternative, eight alternatives that the Robert Peschon Associates looked at. And we'll go through each one of those alternatives and how it affects the traffic model in town and what it does to traffic, not only on Main Street, but even some of the surrounding streets within the city. So this is what it's projected out to 2040. You see, it's gone up to over 25,000 on the south end and going down to 21,000 towards Center Street. So here are the alternative scenarios. You said alternative one is a baseline. Alternative two would be two travel lanes with two left lanes, which basically is a center turn lane with two travel lanes on each side. This is, you know, as we have worked on the downtown plan and talked to basically downtown merchants and stakeholders, this is ultimately kind of one of the designs people really want. So it is an alternative that we really need to look at. You know, a lot of people perceive that maybe you would never be able to go to two lanes with the amount of traffic, but this would model that with the bypass in 2040. Like I said, that's not tomorrow or within a couple of years from now. It would be nice to know that number. Well, what's a bypass going to do for Main Street and downtown Kalispell, say, here within the next two years? We don't have that number. This all projects it out to 2040. Alternative three would be four lanes with left turn lanes. This would probably be the design that straightens it out around the courthouse. You have four lanes going right down Main Street. There's a couple of alternatives, four, five, and six are all one ways. They're just different iterations of that. Alternative seven includes, alternative, alternative seven is just Willow Glen punching that through. And then alternative eight would be Willow Glen and alternative two combined. So alternative one, the baseline, as we went over that, it's just basically the existing. If we were to leave it the way it is in 2040, you could see there's a 21% increase at the south end, you know, 8% at the north end, up on Center Street, you're looking at a 60% increase in traffic. So this would be doing nothing with an outlook to 2040. And this is basically the same slide that just shows the amount of traffic that would be, just leaving it as it is, as a traffic count number, not looking at it as a percentage. Did you want to add some?
Yeah, I just want to put, because you get numb looking at these numbers after a while. But when you stand out on Main Street today and watch the traffic going by, you're looking at 16,000 to 18,000 average vehicle trips. And that's, that's an average of summer and winter use. So in the summertime, you're probably looking at more than 18. And in the wintertime, for example, November and March, April, you're probably looking at less, but it's an average day, a statistical number. So when you look out there, when we say there's 18,000 or 16,000, just assume, when you walk out there, that's what you're looking at. It's a busy feeling. It is a busy feeling. So just for perspective.
So this would be basically making it two travel lanes with the center turn lane, which was alternative two. There will be a summary of these alternatives in a chart that's a little easier to look at and compare them all side by side. But this does kind of visualize what it does to Main Street and the surrounding streets.
And Jared, they, they, these are all project, these are based on 1% average annual growth rate?
Yes.
Right.
The community?
Right.
And we were growing at what percent in 2007?
Well, that Robert Peschon Associates went back, and we were growing at a greater percent than that, but over, say, a 20-year timeframe, it actually averaged out to, I think it's actually about a percent and a half. But, so although there may be some, some points in time where it's higher than that...
Even averaged over 20 years seems lower than what we would have had in the last 20 years.
It does. We cycled, we cycled through. We were on a roller coaster. The Flathead's always been on a roller coaster. So in the boom that you're talking about, we were growing at three and, we averaged three and a half percent for the decade, for the first decade, 2000, 2010, three and a half percent. But what that was, was we were growing a lot faster than 2006, '07. We shipped out people. People left the valley in 2009, 2010. So start looking at that long-term and stretching it out. And we had some questions as well, is that being too conservative? But when you stretch it out, no matter how far back, it really, it really came close to that 1% consistently all the way through. And honestly, 1% is pretty healthy growth. 10% a decade is way healthy growth. We like to say, hey, we're going 20, or 30, or 40%, that's out of control growth. 1% a year, 10%, 12% a decade is healthy growth.
I think it's kind of important to note on this one, that going to two lanes, you know, it didn't change a whole lot dramatically, but what it did do is, when you put it down to two lanes, traffic does start to find other ways. In this scenario, traffic started to creep out to Willow Glen. That's, that's where the numbers, you know, between alternative one and alternative two, I think the traffic started to, start to find some other ways around Main Street. Once again, these are just the traffic numbers themselves. We could, if we need to go back to these, we could. So this is the four lanes, which would, you know, when you look at this, you could see there's some, this is, I think, what downtown stakeholders and members, just when you look at these numbers, it can be scary. You could see that when you allow traffic to travel down Main Street, they use the easiest path they can. You could see increases of 30% on the bottom, 60% around the courthouse, and 30% as you head up Main. But you know, first and first traffic has dropped off because they're just staying on Main Street and, I mean, flying through Main Street is really what they're doing when you make it a four lane. And what this has done is put almost 30,000 cars on Main Street. So versus alternative two, where you had 18,000 cars, just by changing it to four lane, you bumped it up to almost 30,000 on Main Street. So yeah, it's taken traffic off of some of the surrounding streets, but you've pretty much, you know, you made Main Street a highway is what you did, and it's, it's acting as such.
And they maintain the traffic signals the same throughout or similar? Or does this reduce?
I mean, and that's one thing, I don't think it went that far. It was mentioned at the city council work session that, well, how would that work at, you know, Idaho and Main then? Because this isn't going that far, because that's already, you're putting 30,000 at that intersection. Now, what are you going to do at that intersection? And I don't, it didn't, the study didn't go that far at this point as to what they would do. But it just does, it shows that Main Street, if you allow it to, is going to carry a lot of traffic. And as you look at this study, another important thing to notice is that even though you have the bypass, and the bypass does start carrying a lot of traffic, I think, I think at some point, the bypass carries about 18,000 in 2040. But downtown's still got downtown traffic, and it's, it is what it is. You've got the traffic using the bypass, and you've got the downtown traffic, and it's going to be there regardless. They want to be downtown. The bypass isn't taking everything away from Main Street and the core area.
Yeah, and that's the takeaway from this study. This study, each alternative had the bypass factored into it, but with each alternative, whether it's turning downtown into one ways, making it four lane, making it two lane, or doing a lot of other things, the bypass numbers, if we project out to 2040, the bypass numbers stayed at 17,000, 18,000 vehicle trips. That's what we have on Main Street right now. Life would end as we know it if the bypass weren't built, because those 18,000 would be coming downtown. So instead of looking at, oh my gosh, 30,000, you'd be looking at 48,000. Gang, 48,000 is a six-lane highway. So it's, it's, it was kind of eye-opening. It was eye-opening for MDT to look at these numbers as well. So this is, all of these have the bypass functioning and functioning well. 18,000 is a goodly number of people moving at 60 miles an hour. And I understand speed is a different factor. You're 25 miles an hour downtown.
They, this may be taking it way too far, but I'm assuming that of that 18,000 on the bypass, a lot of that would be heavier traffic? And that when the bypass is open, we're hoping that trucks will go that way? And even though there's 20,000 people still coming through downtown, it's more likely to be RVs and smaller vehicles?
Yeah, and it's difficult right now. There are still trucks that have a destination downtown. A lot of delivery happens early in the morning, which is fine, because the world hasn't woken up early in the morning. But it depends a lot on how, we, put it this way, we cannot sign it trucks only. We cannot sign downtown, no trucks. It's still a federal highway. But we also know that through creative design, you can create a highway system that really discourages through truck traffic, because truckers will go where it's easiest to go. That's just human nature. They don't want to slow down. They don't want to be in tight confined areas. So how you design your Main Street?
So if you put roundabouts on Main Street, maybe the trucks will use the roundabouts on the bypass?
Honestly, gang, what is the courthouse?
It's true.
It's a giant roundabout. It's a roundabout's been in this community for a long time. And some people who've been here a long time, longer than I have, actually said it was a roundabout at one time. It was a circle. You could drive around it. Friends of some of you on the, on the board here have told me in their youth that they drove around and around the courthouse, so.
Is the ultimate idea to get, to take Main Street back from MDT? Or will they just, will they never ever give up?
No, you know, it's, one of the nice things about MDT, there's many nice things about MDT, but they plow the snow, they fix the road. That's an expensive piece of highway. What we're hoping for is maybe a reclassification from, from the NHS system, National Highway System, to a system down lower, where they can do some creative design work. And the bypass would carry that higher rating. But we're still looking at having it as a, on the federal system, just for maintenance. Oh my gosh, it's an expensive piece of road.
So this, this alternative three design here, if you're going to add turn lanes to, to an existing four lanes, you're going to lose parking, I'm assuming?
Yeah, you would probably lose all the parking, because what you, what that, what alternative three is, it is, it's four lanes with the center turn lane, so you are going to lose.
Now, can I address that as well? Because I've talked to some MDT folks. There are lots of ways you can do this. We only have so much right-of-way, and what is it?
90.
We have 90 feet of right-of-way to work in. So you can make a four lane with a center turn lane work on Main Street, and you can still keep your parking. But what you're doing is you're taking your sidewalks down to maybe eight feet. Not necessarily acceptable by the downtown merchants. Your travel lanes get to be 10 or 11 feet. An interesting concept, because that will slow traffic down, because you're very close to your neighbor. Typical travel lanes are 12 to 14 feet. So you take it down to 10, it's functional. Communities are doing it across the nation. It slows traffic down, because your next-door neighbor is very close to you. You don't do anything wild and crazy. But so there's ways of doing it, but for every design, there's a, there's an impact, and there's also consequences, somewhat intended. But I was shown a design that works, four lanes, center turn lane, and parking on both sides, but the sidewalks. And I don't know how to explain a downtown with eight-foot wide sidewalks, but when you go to a larger community, what makes the ambiance of a downtown is sidewalks where people can actually dine, talk, walk, have wares out, and things like that. And on eight feet, not much.
So is the plan, can the plan be working on all three of these avenues at once? So you got Main, and then First East and First West, so you can make some design? Because I mean, thinking of, you know, between parking and accommodating all the traffic and bike lanes and having a friendlier, pedestrian-friendly, you know, crossings and the things that, that the downtown association is looking for to make it a better place to, to come and be?
So watch, follow this presentation all the way through tonight. We're trying to take a holistic approach to what's going on. I'm not saying MDT wasn't being holistic in their approach. I think they were a little focused on myopic in terms of their solution was to move quicker, faster, better, more.
Cars.
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 And we're looking at a community. So as we go through here, we don't have specific designs. We have concepts. Every one of these concepts can be done, and there's some trade-offs. But I think by the time we get to the end, you're going to see some concepts that really jump out and go, boy, that really makes sense, as we go through these. We have eight, because the communities, everybody's a traffic engineer, so when you go out and talk with the community, everybody has a solution. By the way, gents, have you considered such and such? Why don't they do that? I can't believe they haven't thought of this design. So we came up with eight concepts here that we thought covered most of the world. So bear with us for a little while, look at the different concepts, and we'll try to get through some of the numbers, but you'll get a rhythm here pretty quickly.
Yeah, and as, as we get into alternative number four, four, five, and six, kind of all deal with one ways. So alternative four, you know, leaves Main Street as, you know, two-lane with a one-way on First West going south and a one-way on First East going north. And what that does is it does drop traffic on Main, not significantly. It actually keeps it, you know, about the same as alternative two, but it increases the traffic, obviously, on First and First, going in a one-way direction.
Quick question on that, Jared.
Yeah.
If you're putting one-ways on First and First, thinking a little bit farther over in a, in the city's realm of this, do we then reevaluate Third and Fourth East? And we've talked about in the past those, you know, how one-way streets scar a neighborhood, things like that. So does that provide us an opportunity to reevaluate that?
See, Tom pulled a face.
I love the fact about this, huh?
I was going to say, I'm guessing that's...
You are right on. Third and Fourth are still on the table for being removed. I mean, that's, that's still a topic in front of the council, still a topic of the neighborhood.
So this, this particular alternative would maybe make that more feasible option, because you've got one-way traffic moving, maybe, at least?
You know, let's, let's put it this way, you guys are shackled with a planning director who does not like one-ways. Okay? I'll just be blunt. And I shared this concept with MDT, and it was somewhat eye-opening for them, because if you go to, go to communities, go to a lot of communities, go to Spokane, spend a lot of time in Spokane, there are one-ways everywhere. And you know what one-ways do? They very efficiently move traffic very fast. Take Division going north. It's, it's, it's a one-way couplet. There's one-ways all over. And what did I just say? They move traffic very efficiently, very fast. But if you're a merchant, you have just lost half of your drive-by traffic. Half of the traffic who doesn't even know you exist anymore, because they can't see you, and they're, they're just, their routine is separated. And how do you get there? You know, you can't turn right on a one-way going, you know, whatever. It's just you can't do it. And that's one of the frustrations we have with our downtown right now. There are no left turns. Those no-left turns really frustrate people, because if you see a place you want to go to, and you're driving across Main, you can't get there if you have to turn left. So you start going around and around till you hit that frustration point. Those one-ways are going to create a frustration point. So again, I, back to where Steve said, what are our goals? We have to define what our goals are. Are our goals moving quicker, faster, better, more? Or are our goals creating a downtown? When you define those goals, some of these solutions will become pretty clear. And right now, the downtown in our council is pretty much wedded the idea that moving quicker, faster, better, more isn't what we're really interested in. We're looking for another solution to take care of our traffic, and how do we keep, maintain our Main Street, so.
So that was one iteration of a one-way. Then, you know, you've got just a northbound and a southbound version. Obviously, in this instance, First East traffic is going to go up incredibly more than it's ever been, because, you know, right now, it's, it's just not functioning as a primary. Only way to go north in this situation would be to go up First Avenue East, or most of the main traffic, other than going some of the alternative routes. And then First Avenue West in this instance would be kind of left out. And just, this, this presentation, these slides came right, right out of RPAs. They, it was a pretty long presentation. I've kind of cut it back so we could summarize it. Alternative six would be just the opposite of alternative five, northbound up Main, coming down first on First East, or First West, I should say. And in the, the summary actually will show the numbers itself. I didn't put those on. Alternative eight would be kind of, well, what is the next, next option? How do we start to think long-term with what traffic can do? And it would include improving Willow Glen, and, which is a significant, you know, undertaking, but so was the west-side bypass. But it would, you know, include punching it through to La Salle through this. And then it would show, you know, leaving Main Street as it is with Willow Glen going through. And in that instance, you could see, even in 2040, you start to see, you know, once you start putting through an alternative route on the east side, you're starting to see a lot of red percentages here. Traffic is dropping. You know, in this instance, you know, you haven't done anything significant as far as moving traffic on First East, First West, or Main Street. You would allow Main Street in this situation actually to be two lanes, you know, rather than four lanes. So it's just looking at more long-term, rather than making Main Street a highway now, and then in 2040, it's not going to carry the traffic anyways. It's coming up with the next, next solution with Willow Glen, and hopefully trying to preserve, you know, the Main, Main Street and downtown Kalispell.
There's, Tom, on the bypass, is there, are they planning on putting the four lane all the way around at some stage?
Yes.
Factor into this?
Yes. It doesn't factor into this, because at 18,000 vehicle trips, you're right at the capacity level for upgrading. The roundabouts would be upgraded at 18,000. So what they're looking at is, and what, let me regroup. When they put this last phase of the bypass in, they decided to do it completely. They did not want to go back into an area, because it was so easy to construct now. They wanted to do the entirety. They acknowledge that they're going to have to go back south now, south of US 2, and upgrade as they go along. And actually, it's going to be Foy's Lake. It'll be four-lane down to Foy's Lake. So over time, each one of those roundabouts will become an interchange. The road will be widened, but it's going to be done in a step at a time as traffic dictates. So 18,000 is a, is a break point for two-lane traffic. More than 18,000, yeah. So in 2040, for sure, we're going to be pushing that, and maybe sooner. But this just acknowledges that they can handle it. And, and as Jared said, I think, you know, in conclusion, I will tell you that these numbers were surprising for MDT. They were surprising for Peschon Associates, that, as Jared said, our mantra all along has been... along has been, MDT designs for 20 years. So this 20-year design cycle was going to be widening the courthouse and pushing through Main Street. And in 20 years from now, when Main Street's totally full, what's our next project to take care of relief on Main Street and handle that next wave of traffic? We're saying, no, let's look 20 years from now, what's that solution gonna be, and do it now. Let's not sacrifice our Main Street. So what would that solution be 20 years from now? And it really does look to be a Willow Glen. We have shown, the engineers have shown, that you can do a three-lane road down Main Street, two lanes with a center turn lane, that you can actually upgrade Willow Glen to a three-lane. We're not talking about a, the interstate bypass design that we have over on the other side. We're talking about a three-lane road, um, that would come out by, by the Snappy's Shopko area and create an intersection there. And then what you have is a real balanced transportation. You've got a major road on the left west side, major road on the east side, and you've got a Main Street. And now you've got a traffic system that can handle traffic for the next 40 years, which is a real solution. Um, to make that work, Willow Glen has to be upgraded. And again, we're now, I'm taking it to the next step, but I wanna show you that it's a practical, real option. But the TAC, Technical Advisory Committee, uh, which oversees major highway construction in the Kalispell area, they receive about $700,000 a year. And we're at a zero balance right now, as we finish Four Mile and the bypass, but as we start accruing money again, um, in 10 years, we could start having enough money to start moving Willow Glen forward as a project. And remember, the numbers that Jared gave you, they're 2040 numbers. So we're gonna drop down with the bypass and then work our way back up again. So you're looking at what happens in 2040. So what happens in 2025 if we put Willow Glen online, Willow Glen online and see the relief? So we have time on our side, but the TAC has in, initially indicated, yeah, Willow Glen probably could be our next major road. Some people have said, well, what about West Reserve? You know, and the bypass opens up, up there? West Reserve, people have said, West Reserve's gonna get hammered, but guess what? The traffic that the bypass empties out up there is the same traffic that's going up past the college right now to West Reserve. It's not necessarily gonna change patterns, cause people going up north are going up north. Willow Glen actually gives you another alternate route that takes you in a different direction and really starts, um, if Willow Glen functions properly, it will reduce traffic on West Reserve, because people have another way of getting around the community. The secret to traffic? Many options, many opportunities.
There's a good chance that Reserve will have to be upgraded by developers anyway.
Yeah. And, and we have a phenomenal, uh, director, uh, out of Missoula for our Western Engineer, Western District, and he is looking at some improvements that can be done to Willow Glen, not to Willow Glen, to, uh, West Reserve. And frankly, West Reserve is a road, can carry a lot of traffic. We are failing at our intersections. Whitefish and West Reserve, that needs a traffic signal redesigned. Four Mile and Highway 93, as the bypass comes on, needs a new intersection design there. The intersections are where we clog. Our roads can handle traffic, our intersections can't. So we need to do intersection work. So again, in conclusion, what we've shown is that, you know, there are opportunities where we don't have to sacrifice downtown, where we can actually do major improvements to a larger transportation system and, and create advantage for a lot of people in the community. Uh, and again, yeah, we're shifting traffic. Traffic has to go somewhere. Some of this traffic would end up going over at Willow Glen, but if you make a safe road on Willow Glen and you have pedestrian trail, you've taken care of a lot of the concerns down there, because guess what? Traffic is using Willow Glen now. Let's make our roads safe, and how can we get a benefit? So that's really what we wanted to leave with you tonight.
Tom, I wanna ask, in terms of scale, the Willow Glen, the east side bypass, if you will, what would that price tag look like compared to, um, the, the, the new bypass that's coming on?
You know, two different animals, two completely different animals. And that was the discussion. For some of you who've been around for a long time, you'll remember, it was the east side Willow Glen or the west side bypass, which one's it going to be? Um, the west side bypass is interchanges, four-lane design, 60 miles an hour. It's a way different critter, 200, 250-foot right-of-way. If we would've taken that design down Willow Glen, even though people said, yeah, that, that, that was the answer, everybody wanted to go down Willow Glen, you would've bought every house on both sides of Willow Glen. Every house, all the way down to, uh, to Snappy's. The second thing that would've happened, if you take the 18 to 20,000 drivers who'd be using that road, and you add that on to the 30,000 vehicle trips that La Salle has right now, you'd be at 55, 58, 60,000. So La Salle would've de facto had to become six-lane. Now, look at La Salle and figure where you put six lanes, and oh, by the way, the new design would've incorporated sidewalks. Whenever you do, you're gonna add sidewalks in La Salle. How much of the fronts of every one of those properties, all the way down La Salle, would we have ended up buying and taking and disrupting businesses? Talk about the community disruption. Whereas the west side, yeah, there were a couple of houses purchased, a lot of farmland bought, there were some lives altered, granted, but we're not talking about 20 and 40 and 16 and 80 and 100 and 150 and 200 properties and businesses that would've been directly impacted. The property cost alone would've been shocking. So it's, sometimes it's careful what you wish for. So back to your question, we're talking about a, a three-lane road. We're not talking about a major road, a three-lane, give you a center, center turn lane, so you can park and make your turns, you have a safe bay, and two travel lanes. Put a pike path on one side, uh, working mostly within the existing right-of-way and a little bit more. It's still millions of dollars. You're gonna drop 10 million on, no matter what you do these days, it seems like. You've got some environmental work and there's a bridge in there or two. So nothing's cheap, but in terms of the scale of the projects that, that the city takes on, our, since I've been here, we've done, well, we did Meridian. Meridian Road was a TAC Kalispell project. And, uh, Four Mile, the interchange at Four Mile and extending Four Mile over to 93, that was a second project we've done. We've done those two projects about once every 10 years, we get a project done. So that's the scale of what we're talking about. Meridian was no small project. That was a chunk of change. So, but you're talking in the 10 million, you're not talking about local dollars. You're really talking about a federal, a federal project, and the city does get federal funds to help with those projects, so. But you're also talking 10 years out. So those are concepts right now, and what we're trying to do is get discussion going.
And as you, as you look at the summary here, and you look at alternative eight, which would be Main Street as a two-lane and a center turn lane with the Willow Glen, you're looking out to 2040 and traffic is staying about the way it is right now. Um, without that east side connection, traffic on Main is gonna increase.
60%.
Right, pretty significant.
And then you've got an extra, so 10 or 12 feet of, of width to, to play with on Main Street.
And then that becomes back to your solution, Steve. Does that extra width become diagonal parking on one side? Does it become larger sidewalks? Does it become sidewalk bumps outs that, to get pedestrians across the road safer? Are there different things? Those are all design issues, but it gives us the ability to start working with some of those things and create a downtown community that, that's kind of exciting and fun. So those are, those are what we're looking for. What we don't wanna be is 20 years from now, we've put so much traffic down Main Street, that the buildings have, have literally shaken apart, no one wants to invest in downtown, and we still have to come up with another traffic solution. That's where we don't want to go. So we were fighting against a curve. I think MDT has really come a long ways in saying, hmm, yeah, I guess there are some other options. This is being played out across the country. Lot of political support locally for this. So this was good news. More to come. Keep you informed. Do I have other questions?
What are they doing from here, other than just advertising this? I mean, find their next step?
We're gonna have open houses in June at the council and at the commissioners' level, public comment, and then it's going back and start saying, hey, where do we go with the next step? So we're starting to get into design. Now, MDT wants to do something around the courthouse? That road is literally falling apart.
Pretty mad.
The reality is, they don't have a designated project to do anything around the courthouse. Ed Taves is great, he's our, our district engineer out of Missoula. Get it designed, he'll find money. But there's no money earmarked for it right now. So really, they've got time on their side, but they wanna get it done, in case they can grab some money at the end of the year and, and run with it. Because you're looking at a three to $4 million project around the courthouse right now, just to, and we're trying to save them money. We're trying to reduce them on a right-of-way they have to buy, because this, if you keep it two-lane, you get this couplet, which is a nice circle, because that four-lane was not a four-lane like this, it was a four-lane like, we kinda laughed that you could open up your window and slap the courthouse. Because when you start looking at the dynamics of running four lanes with parallel trucks on both sides, it takes some pretty big wide turns, which really starts changing the fabric of that whole area down there. You're gonna be talking about losing a couple, the original designs talked about losing a couple businesses on the, uh, east side, just to get those traffic movements through there. And we're saying, we've just spent, I don't wanna tell you how many gazillions of millions of dollars to get their, our, the alternate route finished on 93. Let's let it do its job and see what we can do for our downtown. Cause that is the premise back in 92, 93, when we came up with the west side route. The premise was focus on Main Street, get the big trucks off Main Street, give Main Street a chance to be viable. So we're right, right there. It's, the thought is, don't blow it. Let's. Well, thank you very much for your attention, and we will keep you in tune.